I'd like to welcome everybody to our June 26, 2025 Lander County Board of Commissioners meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, the public, additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation, and this is pursuant to NRS 241-0153B2. I'll call this meeting to order. Mike, would you leave us on the mic just one?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll go to commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Dee, we'll start with you.
I'm sadly lacking. I didn't go to any.
Okay. Lamont?
Yeah, good morning. I attended the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority meeting, and there was a lot to go over. DRI gave us an update on the Water Resource Management Plan that they also presented to the commission here on May 22. Sounds like everything's going good there. Also, during that same meeting, there's some, down in Eureka County, they're, they've got about 3,000 acres that are retired for water resources. So there's some discussions of during some of these, these lands that have been retired for, for water resources, what to do with the land. So there's a group doing a feasibility study down in Eureka County that has to do with, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Aggravoltics, where they use solar renewable energy on some of these retired lands. Currently, I don't believe we have any here in the state of Nevada. They do have some in Colorado, but they're just kind of doing a feasibility study to see if that's something, some of these retired lands that they could maybe find some use for them. Also, during that same meeting, talked about some more of the legislative sessions, which we've talked about. AB 104 was approved and signed by the governor, and that has to do with making the Water Rights Retirement Program a permanent thing. So that was signed by the governor, AB 104. AB 26 passed and signed by the governor, and what that does, it exempts the state engineer from liability for certain damages resulting from performance. And that was very vague on their description, but that did get approved, and so that was AB 26. And also SB 6 was approved, and we've talked about that awarded $1.2 million for DRI to continue their cloud seeding. I did ask how that program was doing statewide, and down in Perrump, they did see some good results, but as far as up here, I haven't got the information yet, but Perrump has had good results with the cloud seeding program. I also attended the Nevada Gold Mines quarterly meeting. Sounds like everything's good there. It was pretty short, but everything seemed to be going on task. And also, I attended the Doing Business in Battle Mountain meeting here for small businesses and vendors, and that went pretty good. A lot of good ideas.
Thanks, Lamont. Mike?
That's in the report.
Okay. Do we have Alicia on the phone? Alicia, are you there?
You'll have to unmute yourself. Alicia, I see your...
We have her, but no audio.
Okay. So we'll move on to staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. So a few things that we have going on. If you guys get a chance, maybe stop by the Civic Center and look at some of the upgrades that have taken place in there, some of the lighting and ceiling tires. That's really coming out nice, including the restrooms. Big improvements there from what it was. The Austin Community Center, it'll be starting July 1st. We met with them earlier this week, our contractor that's going to be up there. We're going to push out some of that hillside where the band camp is down below, kind of raise that building up to where we can put a pickleball court in there. That was Commissioner Homing's idea. It's a great idea. We added to it by bringing, going to bring some fill in and bring that up to where nobody has to walk down a steep hill to get there, and then put that band kind of building there back in front of the building where people have a place to sit and kind of a little shade and a wind block, so to speak, to keep any of that from taking place. There'll be some additional things coming forward that the contractor, it's going to help them removing dirt, and it will, it'll help us, so hopefully it'll save us some change orders or anything like that and a little bit of money. Our senior center, if you guys swing by there, you'll see some of the hydroseeding taking place and the trees that are out front. You know, we have some fruit trees and some other trees that are planted out front, and we just freshly hydroseeded that. Some grass should be coming in there. It'll make that look really nice. Our dog park's over here at the sports complex. We have three of them kind of segregated out there, so people can run their dogs separately. We also hydroseeded that and have some grass trying to come up there, so it'll be nice when all this comes to. The sidewalks on North Second Street or north of town, they're, they're starting to come to a close. We have a small amount of that job left, and then we'll be moving forward to our following project for the sidewalks. The bore across the street, they're over there doing that today. They've already dug the pits, but they'll be punching across and getting utilities to where we can start on our fire hall across the street here. That's going to be kicking off here really soon. So then we're kind of a few of the, you know, 30,000-foot view of the projects we've been working on. If you get a chance, swing into Austin, look at the pool. It's, it's open. We're excited about that, and we look forward to getting as many people down there to Austin and enjoy some of that space this summer as we can.
Okay. Thanks, Bert. We'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda material are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. So we have one approval of June 26, 2025, agenda notice. We have a couple of changes we need to make on that. On item 1.6, it reads approval for payment out of fiscal year 2024-2025. That should be 2025 and 2026. Funds in the amount of, it says, $556,146.41. That amount needs to be corrected to $558,506.13. And then there needs to be a change on 2.8, and it's just a date. Here it reads 2025-25. It should read 2024-25. So, and then we have two, approval of April 24, 2025, meeting minutes; three, approval of May 8, 2025, meeting minutes; four, approval of May 22, 2025, meeting minutes; approval of June 12, 2025, meeting minutes; and approval of payroll change requests. So I'll need a motion on 1, 2, and 6.
I motion we approve item 1 as amended. Item 2 and item 6, payroll change requests.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, the payment of bills, we have check number APA 000643 we need to pull, and if Alicia's on the phone, we'll need to pull APA 000604. I'll hear a motion for the remainder.
Make a motion that we approve the remainder of the bills.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we approve APA 000604.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we approve check number APA 000643.
So we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'll abstain. That's made to my client.
Yes, we let the record reflect that Commissioner Price, her vote wasn't, there's no reflection of it, just for...
Okay. Yeah, we pulled, we pulled that check to Alicia, but she did not vote on it. She, yeah, so she doesn't need to abstain probably. Did she even hear it, or did she...
Yeah, she's on, the only reason I say that is because she is online, but we just, we can't hear her, but I want to make sure the record reflects it. That's why that check was pulled.
Okay. All right, so 1.2, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, putting Stage One burn ban into effect July 1, 2025. This will follow BLM's restrictions. Anybody have any questions on that? If not, I will hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Stage One burn ban into effect July 1, 2025 to follow the BLM's restrictions.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 1.3, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, the reappointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Convention and Tourism Authority Board. Motel term expires June 30, 2025. New terms will be July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027, and our applicant is Michelle Lantham. Anybody have any questions?
I do have a comment. We still have one more spot open on that board, and it'd be really nice to have someone step in there.
Okay. Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'll hear a motion.
I motion we accept Michelle Lantham to be reappointed to the Lander County Convention and Tourism Board.
Okay, we have one motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 1.4, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, the reappointment of two individuals to serve on the Lander County Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission. Term expires June 30, 2025, and new terms will be held will be July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027. We have two. One is Wayne Nebiker, and two is Mike Neff. There's no comment or discussion. I'll hear a motion.
I'd just like to say, I'm on that board with Mr. Nebiker, and he's doing a great job, so just keeping everything together and moving us forward with that board. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of two individuals to serve on the Lander County Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission. Terms expire June 30, 2025, and new terms will be July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move to 1.5, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, 2025-2026 Circs Operations Planning, Training, and Equipment OPTE Grant for the Local Emergency Planning Commission, LEPCE, in a reimbursable amount of $32,000, and authorize the LEPCE Chair to sign. Morning, Michelle.
Morning. Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Michelle. I'm a chairperson for LEPCE.
Hi.
Hi, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have about this before you make a decision or not to approve the grant award letter.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments on this item?
I don't have any questions, but Michelle, I'd just like to say thank you to you and Holly for chasing after this. I know there were a lot of extra hoops to jump through and things asked at the last minute of you guys, so I'd just like to say thank you for that and good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no discussion, I will hear a motion.
Motion to approve the operations, planning, and training equipment, the OPTE grant for the Local Emergency Planning Commission, LEPCE, in a reimbursable amount of $32,000, and authorize the LEPCE Chair to sign.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there, Michelle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. 1.6, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, the renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and approval for payment out of fiscal year 2025-2026, funds in the amount of $558,506.13. Morning, Ellen.
Mr. Chairman, members in order. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for PoolPact. Imagine, if you will, you're sitting at a county commission meeting, and all of a sudden there's a presentation about your insurance, and your insurance premiums are going to quadruple. Quadruple. They're going to go from $50,000 to $200,000. Imagine, if you will, that fellow entities were non-renewed because they had claims. Imagine, if you will, that greedy insurance company that had stockholders that demanded dividends forced quadrupling of premiums. They didn't care if it was going to bankrupt local governments. They didn't care if it was going to bankrupt local businesses, because what they cared about was their self-interest. That's not an imagination. That's 1987. That's 1987. Imagine, if you will, an insurance executive who was a risk manager for Washto County thought to himself, what if? What if we created a nonprofit organization that believed in the communities as much as the elected officials, the department heads, the employees did in their own community? Imagine bringing these people together, having a goal of integrating risk management into their management strategies. Imagine if they had financial strength and stability to create an organization that could pay claims when they happen, meet the demands and the commitments to the communities, you know, to the residents. Imagine if you could deliver innovative risk management services and support training to help those employees, department heads, and communities become better. Imagine having communities working cooperatively with each other to share best practices, to share sustaining futuristic services that worked in one organization to help another organization, sharing resources among cities, counties, and schools so that everybody succeeds. You know, everybody working together, if you will, community-minded, and let the shareholders be the community members of those cities, those counties, and school districts. Imagine this person who became the executive director of PoolPact, Wayne Carlson, doing something in 1987, going to the legislature to getting the rules changed, doing something back then that our future self would be significantly proud of. Imagine the steps and the turmoil and the changes that took place to support financially counties, getting those first four counties to establish, to develop the pool, to growing into an organization that has over 143 members, that has over $200 million in investments to pay those claims, you know, to pay those lifetime benefits for volunteer firemen who were burned in an airplane accident, responding to the call to help the community, having the financial resources to do that, you know, developing a program that has services that include human resources, that provides a dedicated business partner and a business plan for each entity, that shares resources and technology and support to support those organizations. And imagine that the Oversight Committee Chairman comes from a community that, you know, is in the middle of a rural Nevada, who happens to be an undersheriff in a community. Imagine an organization that has law enforcement training with national experts on retainer that provide model policies, Jack Ryan, Steve Campbell, that does monthly roll call training. Imagine a rural community in rural Nevada that attends those monthly roll call trainings, led by an undersheriff, that is always quick to respond and quick to do his job at the utmost best. Imagine, if you will, an organization that sets up an Endog Group and a Nevada Detention Administrators Working Group, working with all the rural jails to make the best better, to do jail assessments and to make sure that we're in compliance with all the federal, state, and local requirements to take care of those folks properly. Imagine dealing with cybersecurity, having a national expert, a guy named Tony Rucci onboard, doing passive network assessments, setting up a No Before phishing campaign, and having a small rural community in rural Nevada taking advantage of those, having phishing campaigns happen on at least a monthly basis, and having employees not do the clickbait to keep their network secure. Imagine belonging to an organization that has online learning, e-learning demands, that won an international award for public, in public entity space by e-learning architect Mike Van Houden, that provides a suite of classes for all employees, okay? Online learning, both for law enforcement, public safety, everything from customer service to stress management, okay, to meet the needs of your training needs of employees rural, okay, online, in person, but more importantly, on our e-learning platform, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, award-winning, using advanced AI to personalize those classes. Imagine an organization that has a health and wellness program, an EAP, Fit for Retirement, has access to Nevada Peer Support Network to deal with the challenges of law enforcement and what firefighters have, a nutrition and exercise program, a four-month metabolic program that will be rolled out, that will help those folks in those high-stress jobs do their jobs better, be healthier, be better employees, better spouses, better parents, better grandparents. Imagine having risk management group, an organization that has experts that help with safety committee, enterprise risk management program, provide ice cleats cool during the winter for safety and cool bands in the summer, grants to the membership. Imagine, if you will, training, governance, you know, this organization being member-owned, member-governed, member-controlled, okay, where you have a seat at the table, committed to quality services focused on the future and stewards of the public assets. That's what Wayne Carlson built in 1987. That's what Bob Quick has been serving on. Bert, your county manager, has been participating in. It's this program that has provided excellence, not only providing insurance, but excellence. And through the leadership, the county leadership here at Lander County, Bert Ramos, you know, three, four and a half, three, four years ago, starting to attend everything that we had offered, you know, encouraging his elected officials, department heads, and employees to take advantage of our meetings, our classes, our training, learning about those things so that it can make an impact here in Battle Mountain, okay? That provides aquatics facility overview at Austin. Imagine if you were a Chief Financial Officer for PoolPact, you stopped by the Austin Pool yesterday, just by happenstance. Well, not happenstance, had to go to the bathroom, pulled off. What a beautiful facility. I was just there yesterday. Imagine, if you will, your law enforcement under the leadership of your sheriff and undersheriff, Robert Quick, you know, attending Endog meetings, the monthly roll calls, doing the jail assessments, being a role model in Lander County to others. That Endog group is so great that other counties that are not members of Pool, AKA Clark County and Washto County, participate in that because they see the value. They see the value and the expertise of what bringing these folks together, these jail administrators, making the best better and how they can benefit. Imagine, if you will, the financial services provided by PoolPact, you know, mentorship programs. You know, Lakin Sullivan's worked with me and taken advantage of things. She set up a stabilization fund, compensated absence fund, a risk management fund, extraordinary repairs and maintenance fund. She's funded those. And the awesome financial security that she's, and the leadership that she's provided on the financial side is amazing. Juicy, your treasurer, imagine your investment returns going from $1.9 million a year to over $8 million, over $8 million of new revenue. If you compare, go look at your financial statements for fiscal year and June 20, June 30, 2023 compared to June 30, 24, your investment and your investments income increased by over, over $7 million. You brought on a new investment advisor, New England Asset Management, a subsidiary of Brookshire Hathaway, and Kelly Sullivan, okay, working with Juicy and doing lost harvesting and increasing your investment yields from slightly over 1% to nearly 5%, okay? An extra $8 million in a year, and what that positive impact that has as public stewards of the assets here in Lander County. Bert, excuse me, Mr. Ramos, county manager Ramos and his team, working with us and looking at the consolidated tax and the SCCRT and evaluating whether we should be a guaranteed county or non-guaranteed county, going back 18 years, doing the analysis, tracking taxable sales, working with tax, the Department of Taxation, to ask that question, why? Why should we not move over? Because for the last 18 years, it would have been beneficial if Lander County would have been there and going on a go-forward basis. In the upcoming year that you're going to start as a non-guaranteed county, the benefit to all the local governments within Lander County, an increase of about $4 million. Three and a half decades, somebody had a vision. Three and a half years ago, Lander County embraced that vision, and on April 17, at our annual meeting, we recognized Bert, Lakin, Juicy for the outstanding excellence that Lander County and Bob Quick has done in Lander County as a member of PoolPact. While your other costs are going up, your health insurance is probably going up 10%, your dental up 6%, pers rate increase, yes, percent, as a total percentage went up 9.7%. Your premiums for PoolPact didn't quadruple. They didn't double. They went up 41 basis points, less than one-half of 1%. But yet, the excellence of what has happened, the transformation in Lander County over the last three-plus years, and we're proud at Pool to help behind-the-scenes champion and encourage excellence, and your people have embraced it to the utmost level. And just so proud, so proud to that you are a member of PoolPact. Today, we ask in the renewal that you, you know, you go ahead and you stay with this program. You stay with that vision, that future focus, innovative solutions, financial strength, cost-effective risk sharing, member networking, resource sharing, you know, and I've helped mentor some folks here at Lander County, and Lakin is starting to help some of the other rural counties in a mentorship. That's what pooling's about, members helping members succeed. And if you want to look at best practices and the biggest success story in the last two years of PoolPact, I need you guys to look in the mirror, look at your leadership team here at Lander County, because they've epitomized what we preach, what Wayne Carlson's vision of PoolPact is. To say I'm damn proud is an understatement, and I apologize for cussing, but it's amazing. And that's why I love working for you, the owners of PoolPact. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. You got, you know, I could have done a 15-point PowerPoint presentation, went through the proposal, but I think the success of Lander County speaks for itself, and your dedicated employees, you know, and the fact that your rate is going up 0.42%, even though your payroll went up almost 7.5%. Your insured values went up 3%. Your employee count went up 9.42%. Okay? Your level of excellence has went up exponentially. Thank you, Bert, Elizabeth, Lakin, Juicy, Board of County Commissioners, Bob. You guys are amazing. And real questions, technical questions, your agent Johnny in the back, because, oh yeah, by the way, we provide insurance, and she can handle that.
All right, Ellen, well, thank you for your positive words. Anybody have any questions or comments for Ellen?
Just one question, Ellen. You kind of touched on that four-month metabolic program getting ready to roll out. What is, what does that entail?
You know, can I stand up for a minute?
Sure.
Of course.
I've lost 65 pounds, sir. I was well-rounded. I think academically, I'm well-rounded, but what this program entails, so there's three of us that have been test-piling it. It's a program through specialty health, specialty health in our workers' comp program through our Fit for Retirement program. That four-month metabolic program, what it's designed to do is we are going to target, and we're going to subsidize at PACT, the top 50 worst health people that are insulin-resistant. Okay? We're going to target those, and if the first 50 who sign up, what they're going to get is they're going to get a personalized exercise and nutrition program, they're going to get a device called Keto Air that's been a personal game changer for me, okay? And what that is, it's a breathalyzer, and I blow into it, okay, for 19 seconds. It tells whether I'm in ketosis. If I'm in ketosis, what that means is a fat bastard that I was, okay, morbidly obese, it means I'm burning fat and not carbs. If I'm in ketosis, what that means is a fat bastard that I was, okay, morbidly obese, it means I'm burning fat and not carbs. And what I found through my nutritionist and my nutrition coach that's going to go along with this program, a guy named Graham, never met him in person, text, emails. Okay, he told me I was addicted to sugar. And by being addicted to sugar, what I needed to do is reduce my carb level. So I reduced my carb level and by doing that, I, you know, adopted a keto diet, trying to have under 20 carbs. In addition to that, Specialty Health has developed a product called the Coptimizer or Alulite. And what it is, is an alulose, it's Gatorade, if you will, it has alulose, which is a good sugar, not the bad sugar. Okay, it has electrolytes and it has, shoot, I forget what the other, there's one other product in there. And what you do is you take one scoop of that, you shake it in a 16-ounce bottle. I take it when I'm doing my Peloton exercise in the morning, you know, I take one in the afternoon. And then what that, and it curbs my appetite. I'm not hungry. And because I'm on a keto diet, what's happening is is that it takes my body longer to process. Okay, process those eating of the eggs, the bacon, the steak, the chicken, the fish. Okay, you know, staying away from the sodas, the donuts, the, you know, all these carbs, right, breads. I hate that pasta, you know, the hardest part for me is giving up breads because I always loved bread. Okay, but this program is going to identify those people, they're going to get nutrition, they're going to get exercise, they're going to have an advanced blood test done before. Okay, and they're going to get categorized based on where they fit because all of us are different. What I've learned through this program is I always say N of one, we're a sample size. My blood and my problems are different or challenges are different and unique than what yours might be than those top 50 people might be. Okay. They are going to put them in groups of 10. They are going to have weekly Zoom session, education sessions, sessions. And what we're going to do through our, our e-learning master is we're going to create e-learning programs and trainings that will ultimately be able to go out to the general employees. Because guess what? I'm not in law enforcement. Okay, I, I have stress in my job, but it's nothing like the hypervigilance that law enforcement has. Okay, but this program can benefit everybody. Okay, and we, our two risk management folks are, are taking and being involved in that program. So they're going to get the regular contacts, they're going to get the coaching, they're going to get the four-month supply, one bottle at a time of the Coptimizer Alulite program. They're going to have the advanced blood tests, they're going to have a calcium artery score, they're going to have to go in and get. So they're going to go in and do digital imaging of their heart and their arteries to see if it's plugged up. Okay. And, you know, in my perfect, in my, in my case, it wasn't, okay, which was, which was encouraging because I was so fat, you know, my BMI. And so then they're going to work with the coaches, with their peer groups, be accountable to each other, to stay on the wagon. One of the reasons why I was so dedicated and I think my success story is there is on June 14th, my daughter got married. Fat dad didn't want to walk her down the aisle. So I started in July with June 14th as a target. One of the proudest days, obviously, when my sons got married, that was a great day. When I got married, it was amazing with both of my kids, I mean, but you add that up. So I had extra motivation. I had a support system in place and that's what these cops and firefighters are going to have. We're going to save lives. And, you know, I was talking, I got my blood results back and my insulin resistance in my metabolic, I was on the red light, green light thing. Sheriff's Office guys know all about the, the big five. I was high red, I'm down to green. And that from, from the test I took in November to the one I took the first week of May. And I'll take another one this coming November every six months. And Dr. Greenwald Greeney in the team have said I've added seven years to my life. But more importantly, I've added, because of the way I feel, a lot, a lot more life to those seven years. And it's worked and it's like I've advocated so hard to get this program as a pilot program, they did it in Indiana, we're going to do it in Nevada. Because if, if it worked for me, I need it to work for these cops because I've had three good friends in Churchill County, law enforcement that passed away shortly after retirement, who didn't live an extended life. And I think this program could have saved their lives. So if we can save lives of law enforcement, those people who put their lives on the line for us and make this program successful, we believe it will be extremely successful for those at risk. And then just like we do everything else, we're going to share that out to others, you know, beyond the law enforcement and firefighting community. So people have access to it. This stuff will be available on the website, the information, the e-learning programs that you can log into. You as a county commissioner, okay, you know, you and your spouse, your spouse can look at it, coworkers can look at it and say, hey, maybe this is something I want to do. And at some point, you know, we, we see challenge, wellness challenges going on, you know, between departments, between counties, between entities, that type of thing. But we're extremely excited and it's working for me, it's working for Jared Hickman, our risk officer. We want it to work for those 50 and we don't want to stop at that 50, but we want to target those that are most at risk so that we can save lives.
Great.
And we're trying to make that investment and I, we hope that they'll make the investment of time, energy and effort and they'll find their passion, whether it's walking their daughter down the aisle or, or, you know, taking their granddaughter to Disneyland, whatever that may be to keep them motivated. Because that's what it's about. I mean, it's not voodoo, it's eat less, exercise more and diet. What, what my daughter taught me, told me many years ago, and I finally figured it out, you cannot work a bad diet. Dad had a bad diet. I was addicted to sugar. And so now I focus more on diet.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm too passionate today to emotional.
No, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions for Alan? If not, I'll hear a motion.
I would like to make one, one quick comment. So everybody looks at, you know, your return on investment. And when you're dealing with insurance companies, you don't really ever get a return on your investment. It doesn't seem like they always get the better of you. But with Pool Pack and Alan unpacked so much of, so quick that I don't know that it, that, how much of it really stuck. And, and a lot of what he said, can you imagine is just, can, this is all reality. This is what's happened. And we owe a huge thank you to Alan and, and his team because our successes have been based off of what they've brought us. If you go back 15 years, Commissioner Sparks was on the, on the commission back then and he, and he said he wanted to be a debt-free county. At that time, we, we were in debt. That's where the, the tide kind of started changing. And then you take and you go back, you know, these past three years, when, when the staff that we have onboard right now started catching on to how this works and, and understanding some of the process a little bit better. And it's, it's not about what you know, it's about what you don't know that, that really gets you. And Alan and them guys have been a great asset for what we don't know. You know, he's brought all of these things to us with, with our, you know, drive and want to learn more and willingness to, you know, Lakin's always on top of everything. Seven days a week, it's not, you know, just a, you know, one week you dedicate yourself to it and then you're off it. Including Liz and Sean and myself and Alan and his team, bringing everything to this, you have a 7, 8 million dollar turnaround. And you can do a lot with 7 or 8 million dollars for, for a community of our size. And, and so when I look at this is from dealing with insurance, it's very seldom that you get them giving you more than they're taking. When you got a 0.42% increase in your insurance and we're increasing employees, we're increasing vehicles, we're increasing the number, the, the risk that, that we've increased for them to cover is substantial. To get a 0.42% increase is really impressive and I, and I want to thank you because it means a lot to us. And we're going to keep growing off of this. It's, we're, it's what we don't know that we're continuing to strive for and that's going to make us only better. And thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Bert. Well said. All right, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve their renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and approve the payment out for fiscal year 2024, 2025 funds in the amount of 558,506.13.
Okay, just let the motion reflect it should be fiscal year or for fiscal year 2025, 2026, so. But we have a motion, is there a second?
We have a, a different amount other than the 556.
Yeah.
I said 558. I thought you said 556, okay, nevermind.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks again, Alan.
Thank you, guys. Keep being awesome.
All right, we'll move to 1.7. Discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, supporting the appeal and providing assistance with the litigation costs of the ranchers involved in the appeal to the United States Court of Appeal for the Ninth Circuit of an adverse ruling by the United States District Court of Nevada in Colvin and Sons LLC and Stone Cabin Ranch LLC plaintiffs appellate versus Doug Burgum in his official capacity as Secretary of the United States Department of the Interior, John Raby in his official capacity as the Acting Director of the Bureau of Land Management at all. Defendants, appellees in an amount not to exceed 50,000. The lawsuit by the ranchers was brought under the Wild and Free Roaming Horses and Burrows Act, WHA, and sought judicial review of two agency decisions issued by the U.S. Department of Interior, Bureau of Land Management concerning the gathering, removal and control of excess wild horses. The first agency's decision was a decision record dated August 2nd, 2022 as related to the Little Fish Lake Herd Management Area. The second agency decision was, uh, second agency decision was decision record dated April 11th, 2023 as related to the Stone Cabin and Salisbury Herd Management Areas. The issue on appeal include, one, did the District Court and the Bureau error when interpreting the word immediately in the WHA as only requiring the agency to promptly begin the process of removing excess animals, but does not require that it complete the process without interval of time? Two, having made the requisite determination under the WHA to gather and remove excess wild horses via initial gathers, did the District Court and the Bureau error when the decision records lacked any limitation regarding when the Bureau would conduct the prescribed initial gathers, albeit perhaps at some point over the 10 years' life of the Bureau's plan? Three, having made the requisite determination under the WHA to gather and remove excess wild horses via population control measures and follow-up gathers, did the District Court and the Bureau error when the decision records conditioned the prescribed population control measures and follow-up gathers upon off-site conditions such as funding limitation and competing national priorities not stated or allowed in the WHA? The remedy sought in the appeal is a ruling that the decision records are unlawful and the decision records shall be remanded back to the District Court for remedy phase consistent with the Court of Appeals decision. Okay, so that's a whole lot to say. Does anybody or counsel like to speak on this or have anything to say in this matter?
Well, this was just basically handed over to us. It's not something that, you know, that I got myself involved in or anything. But I heartily approve of it overall. I'd love to hear from others how they feel. But we know that the, uh, that the wild horse gathers have been way behind. We're moving forward on other fronts in that regard. And the BLM is, is seeming to be more cooperative than they had been, certainly in the past administration. I think it would be a good idea to join with them and, you know, to what extent, I guess that's definitely up to this board. But, but I saw nothing wrong with it. Essentially, just to boil it down for anybody who didn't read the brief, what they focused in on is the meaning of immediate. And they wanted it to be merely prompt, which means when we get around to it.
What's the definition of immediate, right?
Yeah. So, um, the skeptic in me says, okay, so suppose you win. How are you actually going to get these people to move forward? But, you know, you want to try and at least do something to get them to move. This battleship is turning very slowly and it just needs to, it needs a kick and.
So it doesn't, it doesn't save it, this ranch, is this out of Pershing County? Is this where this is at? What county is this out of?
They own quite a bit of ranching interests. The Colvins themselves are down in Esmeralda County. At least if it's the same family, and I think it is, but they have interests up in Oregon. So they've been involved in a lot of these public lands fights for the past 30 years anyway.
So with that, with that being Esmeralda, Pershing, is Pershing or Esmeralda, are they taking a stance in this?
That I don't know. This kind of just landed when it, I looked at it when it got on the agenda, maybe.
I can give some. You bet. I can give you guys some background on how this came to be. So in conversations with Pershing County, trying to get this tri-county meeting together for the 11th Judicial Court, this, this conversation came up. So Pershing County is funding 20,000. It's kind of what, what they can do with their budget, you know, they aren't, they aren't, don't have near the, the funding that we do, supporting this. And because Stone Cabin, where this is based at, is in Pershing County, kind of on the, the county, minor county, Pershing County line is where some of that grazing allotment is. So they, they are moving forward with it. Their big thing was that they feel like the, the win was there for, for these guys, which is for any county. But it was simply the fact that they didn't put the wording in the, into that brief that it's based on funding and on holding capacity. And they don't think that that's right. They think that the number should be, you know, based on what, what they're allowed to be out on the range. So they were asking for us to, to join them. I told them that I thought that was a great idea. It gets us off the ground and potentially will give us standing in the future. I know that we're, we're moving forward in kind of a little bit different direction on our side, but this may be something that we can later leverage on to.
Well, my, my opinion on it is that, I mean, despite Esmeralda, Pershing, Lander, it's wild horses in Nevada and it's a problem for all of us. And I agree with Bert, it's, it is kind of a starting point to handle this problem that's been, man, I've been listening to this for two terms up here about wild horses and nothing's happened. So it's, it's, I wouldn't be opposed to stepping in and helping them because I know that it could eventually help us with our problem here in Lander County. So how does the rest of the commission feel?
Yeah, so this is, this, we've, we've had these discussions for quite a long time. And like Mr. Schaefer said, the BLM is, is starting to, to, to take some action, at least to give some interest. But the thing is, is they're talking maybe just the fiscal year next year that there might be a gather, might be. There's not a, a solid plan of when that is. So, you know, the thing is, is what I would like, what I would have liked to seen today is, okay, if, if there's a plan for 50,000 dollars, what's the plan for that 50,000 dollars? What, where, where does that get us? I mean, if we're going to be putting this towards, towards lawyers and everything and they, they couldn't even get the first one right. You know, so if, if we're going to talk about immediately, there, there needs to be a date on there. If that's in a court, we need, we need a plan before the, before the court is over that day. So, you know, that, that's, that's concerning to me that, you know, something like that would have slipped. So if, if we're going to join in a, in a fight like this, I, I want to see specific dates. I want to see what, what the action is for that. I, this, this is quite a long bit of information, but it doesn't really say specifically where 50,000 dollars is going. So, but I, I fully, fully support this and we, you know, we've, we've, we've signed letters, our, our boards have, have, our, our public lands have signed letters, they're frustrated. I completely agree that we need to do something about this. I would just like to see a plan for that 50,000 dollars.
So Commissioner Edgar, maybe our legal can speak to it, but when we, when we're dealing in litigation, it's hard to really put dates on anything. They, they string things out and postpone them and the, the legal system is pretty complicated when you get into these.
Yeah, so what I'm referring to is on 1.7, number one, right there is where we're, you know, they, we, the ball was dropped when, when they said they're immediately, right? And during that, there, there should have been a date. So this is when the action is going to happen, not immediately. There's too much room for, for error there. So if we're going to go into a fight in something, there needs to be a, a goal, an end goal, a date, a specific actions taken. So, um, but I'm, I'm in favor of this.
What the, the problem is if you actually read the brief that they have submitted, they are arguing, like I tried to explain, about the difference between immediately and promptly. Promptly would give them basically time whenever they get around to it.
Yeah, that's what I don't want. I don't want, I don't want some term thrown out there. I don't want, I don't want some term thrown out there, a time and a date, and if we don't hold these people when we're in these agreements to a date...
What I'm trying to get across to you is, you can't have a date. This is an interpretation of the statute that they're arguing about, and they're trying to take it on up eventually, I would hope, to the Supreme Court as to what the statute means. Does it mean immediately as in tomorrow, start gathering blasted horses, quit screwing around and worrying about whether or not you've got a place to put them? You get them out of here, period.
Sure.
Promptly means, oh, well, as soon as we can build and get a place to put them and have people lined up to adopt them and God knows what else.
No, what I'm saying is, if we're joining this fight, we need to put expectations out there that if we're...
Well, our expectation, our only expectation we can possibly have is to hopefully get this decided that immediately means as fast as humanly possible, and that's the best that you can get. You're dealing with government, we already know from long experience, talk to the man next to you, he's been dealing with this issue from when he was in commissioners before. It's just forever, they will not move, and we've got like the worst problem in probably the United States, certainly in Nevada, right here in Lander County. Things are way overgrazed. As you know, as you've been to the meetings on that, so I don't know what else to say about it. I support it because I support anything that'll maybe give them a kick in the pants and get them moving. I don't think they will be insulted, I don't think Burgum will be insulted because we're moving along. A lot of times, it's the litigation that allows them to have a way that they can cave in to what they want to do anyway, because they, keep in mind, there's people on the other side, particularly like Wild Horse Assistance and, that is Wild Horse Organized Assistance, WOA, and other groups that are fighting us on this sort of thing, because they think somehow this is good for the horses. It's not, but you can't argue with them. Anyway, I don't want to get any more long-winded. If you have questions, ask me, but basically, they're just trying to get the interpretation of the statute such that at least that says, "move it," which is clear already to me, but...
You know, it's comical.
Judge says otherwise.
You tie up so many hours, so many people on the definition of the word "immediate."
Yeah.
Look it up in the dictionary.
Yeah.
Let it be, let it be...
Tell me about it.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's ridiculous to me. I mean, there's just a lot of things in play, too. I mean, it's like, you're moving forward, you've got midterms coming up, and it's like, we know when changes happen in top seats that it can influence, but I just, I think, personally, I think it's a, it's a starting point, and that's what we need in this. It's, it's, yeah, so...
So, if I can, I think that, you know, I've been to so many meetings on these horses and burrows that it's sickening, and is what my reality has turned into is, there's 50 states. Out of the 50 states, there's 10 states that have horses and burrows. Out of the 10 states, there's only three of them that have issues with them. Being their federal animal, right, that are looked over by, do you think that the 47 other states or any of them delegates are going to stick their neck out on the line for something this political? The reality is, they aren't. Why would they? Because they don't have a problem with them. The three of us that do have a problem with them are the ones that are barking, and it just makes for great talking points for politicians and bureaucrats, and it's nonsense because nothing's going to happen because they're federally looked after. That's my stance. So, the only, the only way that you move that pendulum is through litigation. The only one that's going to make that decision is a judge, and that's where I think that our focus should be if we really want to move this. Otherwise, we can keep showing up to meetings, we can, you know, keep buying everybody's time with, you know, going, but the reality of it is, there's 47 others that aren't going to stick their neck out. They don't want to be involved in something this political. That's where, that's my takeaway from all the meetings that I've been over the years, and I think that this is a good starting point for us and anybody else in the three states that are having issues.
So, what's going to happen down the line if the federal government signs over all this BLM and Forest Service land, and those horses are no longer on federal lands, they're on private property? Where's that going to leave us with this?
We're up in the air. That's, I mean, that's sort of off of this topic, but just to answer the question, we're up in the air. We did have legislation, but the 2019 legislature repealed it. But we did have it set up where we looked after it. We had Endow basically in the place of the Forest Service and BLM, and probably, we would have actually hired the same people, once they got laid off from the one, we probably would have hired many of the same people to look after it, because all those AUM fees that they get, that would be state fees, and everything was set up. It was, it was a well-set up thing. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but my assumption, when Commissioner Sparks was against us joining the Utah suit, is that because that wasn't in place, he was worried, just like you are, that, and I'd ask him to speak to this, that it would end up in private hands. Right now, it's up in the air, we don't know for sure, but we did have legislation, and maybe they would put it back in place when they realize, oh, it actually made sense. But who knows? Because, you know, that majority is from Las Vegas, and they have different priorities.
Add a lot more money. Back in the 60s and 70s, they actually had a bounty on wild horses, and they would shoot them and take their ears and get paid for them.
Yeah, that's probably a fact that a lot of people don't want to hear, but... Any more discussion on this? Does the public have any comments or questions on the item? Okay, we just need a motion, whether we want to assist in this.
I agree that it's a, it's, I support it. I would like to see kind of what, you know, what, what's the, what's the outcome that we consider a success, you know, spending $50,000. I would have, I would, I'd like to see that. But I completely support this. I, it's, this is really small money compared to the big problem that we're, that is still going on, and it's getting worse. You know, every day, it's getting worse, so I completely support it, and I will make a motion to approve supporting the appeal and providing assistance with the litigation costs of the ranchers involved in the appeal of the United States Court of Appeal for the Ninth Circuit of an adverse ruling by the United States District Court of Nevada, not to exceed $50,000, as discussed.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we are. Moving on, 2.1, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove resolution number 2025-05 to levy the 2025-26 tax rate and other matters probably related there, too. Good morning, Juicy.
Good morning. So, this is just the resolution that needs to be read in to levy the 25-26 taxes.
Bill, do we need to read the resolution in? Or can we just open on it as being part of our public packet?
Usually, you don't have to read the whole. No, we've been doing that tradition.
Exactly.
If you summarize what it's...
Okay. Well, with that, are there any questions, comments? I'll hear a motion.
I'm, we have to read the whole thing.
He's saying we can, but we don't have to.
Okay, how about if we just took...
Just summarize what it is and...
Yeah, I move to approve the resolution of 2025-26 per NRS 361.460. The Board of County Commissioners of Lander County now pending the Nevada Tax Commission the combined and valory and property tax rate that the levy of taxes in Lander County for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026 shall be in accordance with the following, with the listed schedule on each fund of $100 worth of property. Did that work?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to 2.2, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove payment of the Lander County Treasurer or payment of taxes held for 2025-26 and other matters related there, too.
So, these are just payments that I hold for people for the upcoming year of taxes?
These are people that have overpaid?
Yeah, some overpaid and some actually want me to hold it for the upcoming year.
Okay, if there's no discussion or questions, I'll hear a motion.
I move to approve the payment for the Lander County Treasurer in the amount of $2,280, or no, $2,000, sorry, $2,080.95 for taxes collected in advance for specific taxpayers for the 2025-26 tax year.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, 2.3, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove adjustments to the roll.
So, these are all the adjustments that the assessor makes for 24-25 year?
How many increases?
She had...
This looks like, it looks like decrease, doesn't it?
Well, there was one where they didn't bill, so that...
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, but the rest of them are...
Are increases, yeah. I see that.
Write-offs that they did for mobile homes being destroyed or exempt properties.
Almost 12,000. All right, anybody have any more questions on this?
Okay, I motion that we approve the adjustments on the tax roll for 25, 2025-26, right?
So, 24-25.
Or 24-25 for the, as suggested by the assessor.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, 2.4, for discussion and possible action to acknowledge the list of refunds per NRS 3.5.240 made by the Lander County Treasurer from July 1, 2024 through June 26, 2025.
So, these are refunds that we gave back to people for the assessor as well?
Okay.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I motion that we approve the list of refunds in the amount of $1,711.16 made by the Lander County Treasurer for the 24-25 year.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
2.5, for discussion and possible action regarding one-year delinquent tax letter per NRS 361.5648 and NRS 361.565.
So, this is just my letter to the board stating that I did my one-year delinquent letters?
Okay. There's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
Yeah, I move to acknowledge the Lander County Treasurer's personal affidavit to the Board of County Commissioners affirming that the due notices for one-year delinquency has been mailed with respect to each parcel.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 2.7, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the transfer of...
Wait, you missed 2.6.
Oh, sorry. 2.6, for discussion and possible action on the affidavit of publication of notice of sale and return of sale of the county delinquent real property tax sale held April 28th, April 28 through the 30th, 2025, in accordance with Section 361.595 of the Nevada Revised Statute.
So, this is the results of my tax sale that I just had?
So, the 10 parcels that received no successful bids, they'll go up on the next time, or somebody can come in and pick those up?
No, they have to go up on the next one.
They have to go up on the next one, okay.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve the affidavit of publication of notice of sale and return of sale of the county delinquent real property tax sale held on April 28 through the 30th, 2025, in accordance with Section 361.595 of the Nevada Revised Statutes.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 So, where does, oh, aye. Where does this leave us on the property that was pulled out by the county?
That will be on the next agenda.
Oh, okay.
In Austin.
In Austin, okay. All right.
All right, 2.7, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the transfer of delinquent water and sewer accounts to the 2024-25 secured tax roll as reconciled on January 26, 2025. A, to transfer the reconciled accounts according to Lander County Code Section 13.04.050 7E, Battle Mountain Water and Sewer, and B, to transfer the reconciled accounts according to Lander County Code Section 13.08.050, Austin Water and Sewer.
So, this is to transfer all delinquent water and sewer accounts to the 24-25 tax roll?
Okay. All right, if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve the reconciled transfers to the 2024-25 secured tax roll according to Lander County Code Section 13.04.057E, and approve the reconciled transfers to 2024-25 secured tax roll according to Lander County Code Section 13.08.050.
And then, we should have an amount in there, right? So, A should be $70,092.96?
Not to exceed that.
Not to exceed that, and then B should also have in that motion not to exceed $5,089.76. So, you good with that? And then...
Yes.
Okay, so we have that in the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote aye with the understanding that until this morning, my name was on that list.
Thank you for that disclosure. Okay, 2.8, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove payment of delinquent water and sewer accounts for 2025, oh, that's, yeah, that should read 2024 to 2025 and reconcile on June 26, 2025. A, to pay accounts according to Lander County Code Section 13.04.050 7E, Battle Mountain Water and Sewer, and B, to pay accounts according to Lander County Code Section 13.08.050, Austin Water and Sewer.
So, this is to pay those accounts?
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve the payment to the Battle Mountain Water and Sewer in the amount not to exceed $70,092.96 reconciled on June 26, 2025 for the Battle Mountain Sewer and Water delinquent accounts 90 days or older per Lander County Code Section 13.057E, and to approve the amount not to exceed $5,089.76 reconciled on June 26 to Austin Sewer and Water.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, Juicy.
Thank you.
So, now we'll move to correspondence, reports, futures, agenda items. Anybody have anything on this?
Did you get in contact with Endot about the Battle Mountain Highway at all? Remember, I mentioned it at the last meeting?
Yep, I did reach out, and I have not got a response.
Okay.
So, I will retouch on that again.
Because it, every week, it's worse. You guys have been traveling a little lot, you know, and it is all in Lander County, so I feel like we have a right to really complain about it.
Yes, I will request that they, usually, they do an annual, they show up, Endot shows up, and they skip last year's to present to the commission, so I'll request that they come and do a presentation, but they skipped last year for some reason.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, she did a presentation to NACO, but she didn't come here.
Okay, any more on correspondence, reports, or future agenda items? Okay, hearing none, I'll move to public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Okay, I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.